Leslie, are you sure?
There you go.
Okay, got it.
Huh? It's starting.
You got it? Yep. Okay.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Malamwee?
Here.
Councilmember Imick?
Present.
Councilmember Painter?
Here.
Councilmember Corio?
Here.
Councilmember Black? Councilmember Bray?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
Here! Thank you. Never a dull day.
Let the record show it's my fault. I did park in the mayor's parking spot. So, I thought he was here already.
But I did find one.
Okay.
In the library. Anyway. Pardon me?
Jeff is on the phone.
Jeff, are you, you hear us?
I can hear you. You can hear me.
That's great. Good to hear you. And at this, we do need a motion to make sure that we allow you to participate today.
Mayor, I move that we allow Alderman Crabel to participate because he's working out of town.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Jeff, before we move on this, are you someplace warm?
No, I'm actually up in Michigan.
Okay, okay. Well, then, I think we can probably approve this. If you're someplace warm, that'd be a different story.
Gotcha, gotcha. I understand.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Malamwee?
Yes.
Councilmember Imick?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black? Councilmember Crabel? Oh, he can't.
He can't go down on his dill.
Councilmember Bray. Sorry about that.
You're legit, Jeff.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, we then have appointments and recognitions. We start with a proclamation recognizing Merlin Kennedy, Pastor William A. Bennett, and his wife, First Lady Charlotte Bennett, the United Way of McLean County's Women's United Day, excuse me, and the appointment of Bernie Rozinski to the John M. Scott Commission as requested by the Clerk's Department. But let me start with the first proclamation. Is there someone here to accept recognizing the United Way as United Women's Day? Okay? If not, I'll go ahead and read this. Recognizing United Way of McLean County's United Women, excuse me, Women United Day, November 20th, 2019, whereas Women United members are a group of like-minded women who contribute their personal passions, inspired ideas, and unique strengths to the mission of building stronger communities, and whereas Women United will be able to make a difference through volunteer opportunities within the community alongside others who share their passion, and whereas members of Women United are encouraged to join in igniting the power of women who bring the passion, expertise, and resources needed to get things done, and will create lasting change in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Terry, and Mayor, to hereby declare November 20th as the United Way of McLean County's Women United Day in the city of Bloomington, urge all residents of the city of Bloomington to join in observation, excuse me, observance of and participate in activities recognizing the special contributions of Women United and that they will provide to our public. Thank you very much. And we can clap tonight. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Pastor William A. Bennett and his wife, First Lady Charlotte Bennett. Is there someone here to accept this? Thank you, sir. Please come forward. And if you could come over, state your name. Oh, William Bennett. Okay, all right. Whereas Pastor William A. Bennett became Senior Pastor at the City of Refuge Ministries in 2007, and whereas on Sunday, October 20th, 2019, City of Refuge Ministries held its annual pastoral anniversary and honored Pastor Bennett and his wife, First Lady Charlotte Bennett, and whereas Pastor Bennett plays a critical role in community outreach and has helped thousands of individuals and families, whereas Pastor Bennett has championed efforts to reach out to local youth and speak out against violence in our community. Therefore, I, Terry, and Mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby recognize Pastor William A. Bennett and his wife, First Lady Charlotte Bennett, for their extensive work to help make the city of Bloomington an even better place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Is Bowlin to come up and get a picture with him?
Yeah. Pastor, pastor, you want to come up and maybe have someone take a picture? Is Nora around? Nora with a camera? Or somebody with, anybody with a camera? Anybody with a cellphone can do this stuff. Yeah. And we won't put any, any little things behind that.
Don't let me down, Billy.
There we go. One more. In our last proclamation, recognizing Merlin Kennedy. Is there someone here to accept this on behalf of Merlin Kennedy? Well, I was at his funeral sadly the other day. It was extremely well-attended, and certainly someone who has had an incredible, in fact, impact and has been part of the history of the changing nature of Bloomington and Bloomington Normal is Merlin Kennedy. And one of the things that I noted at his funeral at the AME Church in West Bloomington was that there was an article that was published, major article, on Jim Crow and segregation in Bloomington Normal in the Illinois Historic Society two years ago. And as part of that, there were two pictures in this article. One of the two pictures included Merlin in his Santa Claus outfit, and of course Merlin is African-American. That created quite a stir in 1978, '79. Anyway, that being said, Merlin Kennedy's loss is just unspeakable. His contributions have been incredible. Whereas the city of Bloomington recently lost a true pioneer of human rights, Merlin Kennedy. Whereas Merlin Kennedy with grace and righteousness shone the spotlight on housing, employment, and other discriminatory practices in our community. And whereas Merlin Kennedy helped lead the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, in our community for many decades, unafraid to confront unjust situations, and motivated the city and our citizens to action. And whereas Merlin Kennedy reached out to all sectors of the community for assistance and always built alliances in his support for human rights. And whereas Merlin Kennedy was the first recipient of the city's Martin Luther King Jr. Award, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Terry, and Mayor, salute the legacy that Merlin Kennedy left in our community, and be it further proclaimed that I encourage all citizens not only to appreciate the legacy of Merlin Kennedy, but also to join together in the solidarity, human solidarity, to recognize that fairness and equality is a standard that every Bloomington citizen should enjoy. And if we could just give a round of applause, and I would ask for a standing ovation for Merlin Kennedy! Okay. At this point, we move to public comment, and we have, excuse me. Oh, did I, is it, the appointment would be, is there someone, see, I'm sorry. Bernie Rozinski, is Bernie here? If he would stand to be recognized. Okay. No, thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, again, we have public comment. We would normally, under our general policy, excuse me, is not to respond in public comment. If you want responses, if you want answers, or if you want us to, in some cases, help you solve problems in real time, I highly recommend that you come to the Mayor's Open Houses. They're kind of like mini-town hall meetings every two weeks. We sit around the fishbowl back there, and sometimes have, need more chairs, hopefully, on days where more citizens take advantage of this, and we can try to get you any responses or public dialogue. But again, our general policy here is not to respond. You have up to three minutes, and we may have more than the number of people who are allowed, you know, under a 30-minute rule, so I would ask you if as much as possible to be as brief and succinct as possible, and perhaps if you're talking about the same subject, perhaps not to repeat the same themes. But first, we start with Grace Golick, and I'm going to read these in three so you can be ready. Barbara Olbrich and Jake Van Woveneer. Wilvelier, excuse me. Jake Van Woveneer. And so we'll start with Grace, and then Barbara, and Jake. And we start at 6:12. Thank you very much. Grace?
Hi, my name is Grace Golick. I'd like to thank you all for listening to me speaking today. I'd like to first say that I've been a member of this community my entire life. I went to Normal Community High School. My dad is a teacher here in town. My mom's a nurse. And I would like to say that I have a deep connection and appreciation for this community, which is why I'd like to bring up that with the looming threat of climate change, populations who are most at risk, including the elderly, homeless, and young people, are more at risk for hypothermia and for heat stroke and other diseases that can be caused from extreme heat and cold exposure. So, what I would like to do today is present to you guys a story. So, usually what I like to do is I like to have a couple of canned goods and some extra toiletries in my car in case I see a homeless person, just to help them out a little bit. So, one day as I was coming home from school, I used to go to Heartland Community College. I saw this man walking home, and it was right after the negative 20-degree polar vortex, so all the snow was starting to melt, and it was super soggy. So, I pulled over, and I said, "Hi, my name's Grace. Is there anything I can help you with?" And I brought him a couple cans and some toiletries. He said, "Yeah, I'll take a few things." And I started talking to him, and I said, "How did you survive the polar vortex? Were you able to get into a shelter? How did you stay warm?" And he said, "Well, my son and I, because I have a child, we aren't allowed in the shelter." So, I got as many blankets as I could, and I went on the Constitution Trail, and I wrapped him in the blankets, and I held him to keep him warm all night. And I said, "Oh, I can't imagine that." And he said, "Well, we're lucky. We survived, and we didn't get sick." What I'd like to say to you guys today is that many people won't be as lucky if we don't take action. I am proud to be a member of this community, but I will not be proud if people die in the streets because we fail to take action when we know that there'll be more extreme weather events coming, and they'll only get more extreme. What me and many other community members are asking today is that we start taking action, creating warming and cooling shelters, have people donate blankets and other necessities, and retrain paramedics and other health personnel on the correct responses to people suffering from heat stroke and hypothermia. As a proud member of this community, it is not only your responsibility, but it is all of our responsibilities to take these first steps for the emergency things that happen, such as extreme polar vortexes and extreme heat waves, but also be open to other ideas in helping to slow the progression of climate change, as this is a looming threat, and we know that it will only get worse. I'd like to say thank you for listening to me today, and I appreciate your time here.
Thank you. Barbara, and then Jake and Todd Miller.
Hi, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you here today. My name is Barbara Olbrich. I'm a retired attorney. I grew up in Fairberry, Illinois, and I live two miles north of Towanda with my husband. I understand you'll be receiving some input tomorrow from the cannabis zoning committee. I can't come and attend that tomorrow, so I was hoping to give you my input directly here today. My husband, Mark, and I have children, grandchildren, parents, siblings, nephews, and many friends who live in Bloomington. We worked for most of our adult lives here. This is where we shop, work, and play. We have a real stake in Bloomington, and we care a lot about this community. My husband and I urge you to opt out of permitting the establishment of recreational cannabis businesses here. As an attorney, I've studied the cannabis issue. First, it's completely illegal at the federal level, so whatever the state has purported to do to legalize it, and whatever time you, the council, use to address its use, its sale, its production, it will still be illegal. Federal law enforcement agencies could come in at any time when they see fit and enforce their statutes, and the state could do nothing to protect you or any citizens or businesses of Bloomington from being prosecuted under federal law. Producing and selling cannabis is a federal crime. The Federal Bank Secrecy Act forbids banks from accepting cannabis-generated money, and there is no bank exception allowing cannabis businesses to use the banking system. So cannabis businesses operate on an all-cash basis, and this fact makes those businesses inviting to target, inviting targets for thieves and other criminals. So when you think about using your limited agenda time to tackle municipal problems, my husband and I think it's wiser for you, our elected officials, to use your time on those real and urgent problems that are clear-city problems, aging infrastructure, for example, instead of spending time on issues where federal preemption nullifies your actions anyway. Second, if you permit it sale and operations here, you encourage it and you spread it. Other states that have legalized it for recreational use are finding that there are unintended negative consequences for doing this. In Summit County, Colorado, recreational marijuana has been available for sale since 2014, and now there's a serious shortage of school bus drivers there. Another important issue, the roads are less safe in Colorado than they had been before recreational cannabis was legalized. Crashes up to 6% in Colorado are up 6% in Colorado. Third, I looked at the zoning map that was proposed for recreational businesses. If you permit the sale of it, it means there are going to be some bricks-and-mortar establishments somewhere, and it looks like the thought is to put, push these businesses to the edges of the community. Towanda is one of those edges. I say, who on an edge is going to want to live near a business engaging in illegal activity? Thank you very much.
Jake, Todd, and Cecilia. Cecilia Long, excuse me.
Hello. Thank you for the time. My name is Jake Van Woveneer. I'm a student at ISU, so I've been a member of this community for about four years now. The longer I've been here, the more I've started to appreciate the culture here and the way that everyone cares for each other. I'm also here to speak about extreme weather mitigation plans, similar to Grace', and I also have a personal story. A few years ago in high school, I was running with my cross-country team on a very challenging workout, five-mile workout. About a mile and a half from the end, my hands started getting heavy, my head started getting light, and I lost my memory from there until the end of the workout. A few hundred meters from the school, I actually passed out and started hallucinating because of heat stroke. Luckily, I was close enough that they were able to carry me into the athletic trainers and put me in an ice bath and keep me safe. While I was being carried, I was having hallucinations and saying nonsense, and it was extremely scary, and I'm fortunate that I was close enough for them to take action and keep me safe. Had I been further, I could have suffered brain injury, organ failure, or other serious consequences. That was about a 90-degree day, and I was a young, healthy person. When climate change gets worse, this is, we're going to have many more extreme heat days and cold days, and our most vulnerable members, as Grace mentioned, being older people and young people, as well as housing-insecure community members, won't have the opportunity to be quickly transported to an ice bath like I was, and heat exhaustion and stroke can set in within minutes. So I'm also requesting that the city council develop plans to keep people safe as the climate crisis worsens, establishing cooling centers, training EMS personnel to handle these situations properly, and installing splash pads along with other things, things that don't cost very much but would have a great impact in making sure that our community stays safe as this crisis gets worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Todd Miller, Cecilia Long, and then Ray Laws.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Todd Miller. I appear before you tonight as a resident of Bloomington, a father. My son, Jack, is here with me tonight. I'm an attorney, I'm a teacher, and I'm a director of Recovery Starts Today, which is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to support the drug and alcohol abuse recovery community in McLean County and to foster the operation of the McLean County Drug Court program. Specifically, I wish to address the manufacture and distribution of cannabis products in Bloomington. As we sit here tonight, the state of Illinois has not appropriately updated the administrative code. They have not promulgated appropriate regulations which would be designed to ensure the safety of our communities relative to the new cannabis laws. Studies show that legalized cannabis in other states has been a failure. Now, I know some of you are going to say, "But there are studies that show that legalized cannabis in other states has been a success." And I will grant you that. There are studies on both sides, and that's ultimately my point. The fact that there are studies on both sides should suggest to you that the jury is still out on this issue. We don't know. We don't know if it's good for local communities. We need time. There's still much to be learned. Whether and how much regulation is required is going to be settled, as these issues always are, in the courts. Do we want the precious tax dollars that we may gain from this issue to be used defending these actions in court? I say no. Rather than jumping headlong in and allowing cannabis sales in Bloomington, I urge you to take a more cautious approach. Nothing is to be gained by jumping into the void. No one yet knows what impact local cannabis sales will have in our community, especially those in the recovery community. On behalf of Bloomington residents and their children, and on behalf of Recovery Starts Today, I urge you to proceed with caution on this issue. Do not allow our community to serve as a guinea pig. I urge you to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move next to Cecilia Long, Roy Laws, and Zachary Gittrich. Cecilia?
Good evening. My name's Cecilia Long. I've been a member of this community since 2014. I graduated from ISU. I'm currently a local farmer and a life coach for students at Heartland Community College. I'm also the lead organizer on the Climate Action Campaign, which formed a few months ago after both the community conversation "It's Getting Hot in Here" and the climate strike in Uptown. I'd like for you to close your eyes for a minute, if you can. I promise I'm not going to do anything weird. I want you to take a moment and think about how you felt coming into this meeting today. So, most of you, like me, probably left your house, walked to your car, drove here, then parked, and then walked outside for maybe a moment, and then entered this space. Right now, it's about 12 degrees, and the amount of time that you and I probably spent outside in the cold was only a few minutes, and for some of us, even that may have felt pretty uncomfortable. Now, I want you to imagine that it's close to negative 30 degrees with the wind chill off and on making it feel closer to negative 50. Being outside is more than unbearable. It's life-threatening. And on top of all that, you don't have a heated house, you don't have a car, you don't have any money, and you're not welcome to be in public spaces for very long unless you put on purchasing something. You don't know where you're going to sleep, and right now, it's getting darker and colder. Regardless of how you found yourself in this situation, it is your reality, and you could die. You can open your eyes now. This very situation happened for many people last winter. Last year, I took a job at Path Crisis in their homeless services department as a program coordinator. It was during the polar vortex of last year I realized just how little our community has done to make sure that people aren't suffering and dying in extreme weather. The two shelters we have in town are not able to keep up with the amount of homeless people in our community, and they enforce rules that make it difficult for children and families to stay sheltered together, as well as populations that struggle with mental health issues and substance abuse. If you'll remember, the polar vortex was later in the winter. Path had already been shelling out money- Path had already been shelling out money to put people in hotel rooms to make up for the lack of shelter space. The demand was so great that we ran out of money and were forced to shift our focus to staying afloat. There was even rumor that we might have to shut down homeless services altogether. We called you, the city, police, and fire departments, libraries, but no one could help because there was no plan in place. Still, we did our best. We sought out our clients, but we knew the shelters rejected. People came in drained, desperate, hungry, and cold, and we knew that even if we were able to give them a place to sleep for a night or two, it would be cold again soon, and we'd still be without resources. This is unacceptable. How is it that we live in a community that's packed with academics who study the problem, businesses that turn over extreme amounts of wealth, and yet we cannot keep members of our small cities from risk of freezing or heating to death? For me, this issue is more than just a social or social issue or a global crisis, it's very personal. I lost my dad after he'd been chronically homeless for most of my life. We need to change our housing policy. We need to make sure that safety net programs are fully funded. We need to take meaningful action on protecting our environment, but for now, we need to keep people alive. This past Saturday, over 75 people came out to our campaign launch. We need your help. Mayor, just moments ago, I heard you say that we need to be working towards a community with fairness and equity for all. I ask that you join us to figure out how our community will respond to this climate crisis locally. We will be reaching out to you to set up meetings soon. Whoever is here for the Climate Action Campaign, can you please stand? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roy Laws, Zachary Gittrich, and Radiance Campbell.
Hello, my name is Roy Laws, and I know that the Planning Commission meets tomorrow night, and I'll be there also, but this is the group that will actually vote on whether we do it or not. So I would like to start by saying that we oppose, my wife and I, oppose the text amendment to define and allow the adult use of cannabis business within the city of Bloomington and McLean County. The character, culture, and economics of this community has been built on the families that live and work with two large, successful insurance companies, two very large medical facilities, two universities, and all the family businesses that support, are supported by this economic stream. I do not see how opening up and encouraging a cannabis business platform and encouraging the increased use of these products fits into the culture of this community. By all accounts, from other states and cities where this has been done, it creates an increased load on law enforcement and actually does very little to generate increase in the overall tax revenue. The documents from the Planning Commission actually say additional security measures may be needed for cannabis establishments. In the Agenda Item A document that the Planning Commission puts out, it says, "Location of cannabis facilities need to be looked at as maybe a redevelopment or vacant and underdevelopment areas." And I don't see this in any of the zoning documents that they put out. The manufacture and process of these products does affect the surrounding area and has historically had a negative impact on property values in the affected areas. The Planning Commission documents point out the problem of odor and waste that need to be addressed, but they don't know how. As the assessed value decrease, the tax base is impacted, and revenue stream to the city will decrease. We do not see how this can be pushed through and forced on the community at large without a better understanding of the total impact. Everything I have read and heard from the promoters of this plan only talk about the possible and assumed advantages and totally ignore the negative impact that many states and cities have had to deal with. I feel that you, it sounds like you've already made up your minds on where to go, but I do want to, you don't want to hear the general public feels, but we do care and feel that our input, concerns, and our opinions are an important part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Zachary Gittrich, Radiance Campbell, and Alan Axelrod.
I just want to preface this by saying that I'm here as an individual, I'm not representing any organization or group. There are many pressing questions that keep us up at night. Will global warming destroy life as we know it? Is chocolate better than vanilla? Does pineapple belong on pizza? What is Trump's hair made out of? Does Diane Benjamin have a soul? Or is she merely an empty festering husk of nativism and hatred? We may never know the answer to some of these questions, but there are some questions we can answer. For instance, what should be done with cannabis tax revenue? And I want to begin to answer this in the negative, about where the revenue should not go. Honestly, I don't think a dime, a penny, that nine-ten stuff they get you with at the gas station, not even a hay penny of cannabis tax revenue should go to the Bloomington Police Department. And here's why. The overwhelming majority of issues we've gotten from prohibition have been from highly unjust and draconian policing. If your house burns down, you don't give the insurance money to the arsonist. So spare us the lamentations of the Bloomington Police Department or any police department when it comes to this issue. I truly do not have tears to give. I'm being very frugal with my tears, I must admit. Regarding cannabis, police are better seen and not heard, because we've been listening to law enforcement's opinion about cannabis for over 40 years. And what recommendations did we get? Mass incarceration, broken windows policing, stop and frisk, a failed war on drugs, pretext stops, and almost 1,000% increase in the use of SWAT raids largely on low-level cannabis dealers, militarized police, and entire communities terrorized and devastated by the overzealous enforcement of prohibition. One of the main reasons for ending prohibition is precisely to repair the damage done to communities by law enforcement, and that is where cannabis tax money should go. At the same time, I believe this council should stress to law enforcement a complete de-emphasis on wasting resources on cannabis enforcement. Even though cannabis will now be legal, there are still plenty of ways to come up against the criminal justice system. In Canada, after alleged progressive Justin Trudeau legalized cannabis, he placed former Toronto Police Chief Bill Blair in charge of the marijuana. Enforcement of pot laws has actually skyrocketed there. Now, obviously, if someone is selling pot outside of the school fence during recess, yes, prevent that from happening. But if you have some, even adult teenagers smoking pot or even selling it, leave them alone. Let ISP waste their resources in dealing with it. But I think a majority of residents are long past exhausted with draconian cannabis reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Gittrich and, oh, that was Zachary, I'm sorry, Radiance Campbell. Sorry, I'm not calling you back. And then Scott Steinle. So Radiance, Alan, and Scott.
Hi, my name is Radiance. I grew up in Ward III, and I am now a student at ISU. I am here as an organizer with the Climate Action Campaign, just like some of my friends who have come before me. And I want to share a story of my experience last summer. I worked as a preview guide at Illinois State, meaning that they put me, or as part of my salary, they put me up in dorms, where I lived in Hewitt, Manchester. And over the summer, there was a power outage, and this power outage wasn't caused by heat, but we know that as heat gets worse and more extreme, that is something that can happen, is grid-wide power outages. And even though we had backup generators to restore our power at ISU, our AC was out for four or five days. In that time, my room became too unsafe to live in. By the first day, I walked into my room, and my floor was covered in condensation that I didn't notice, and I slipped and fell. I'm young and able-bodied, and I recovered quickly, but that would not have been the case for a lot of community members. That night, my room was too hot to sleep in, I wasn't allowed to sleep there, it was so hot, and the university rehoused me, so I got to, I got moved to a different dorm. That happened twice over the summer because of heat. And I know that I was protected by privilege in that moment. The university had used its resources, it was responsible for me, and it rehoused me and put me in a safer place during that heat wave when we didn't have AC. But for my parents and a lot of other people in this community, if that were to happen in their own homes, if their own homes were too unsafe to live in, they don't have another means by which to go somewhere else. So that was really concerning for me. Our job was canceled that week because it was unsafe to walk between buildings, and then to get to the next building, and there wouldn't be AC in that building, so we weren't allowed to even work that week, or for two days out of that week. So you have a bunch of students then, whose living place is unsafe and whose place of work is unsafe, and we had nothing to do but loiter in businesses all day. And again, I feel lucky that I was protected by my privilege to where I could go somewhere, purchase something to eat, and stay there as long as they would let me, until I had to go to the next place, purchase something to eat, and stay as long as they would let me. But I kept thinking about what if I had kids in tow, or what if I had to go to work and leave my kids somewhere? I am worried for the most vulnerable of our community if someone like me, who was protected by the university, had these struggles last summer, and our heat, knowing that the heat is going to continue to get worse. Another thing, oh, so last winter, we also had issues. I, my apartment's heat couldn't keep up, and my friend's apartment's heat couldn't keep up, and we were lucky that we had my partner to house us for a few days. So again, these issues are affecting us already, and we know that they're going to get worse, especially for the most vulnerable in our community, so we need your help putting together a plan to help protect us and keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Axelrod, and then Scott Steinle, and I think that may be all that we have time for.
Hi, my name is Alan Axelrod. I'm from Urbana. People think of Champaign-Urbana as one of the wealthier areas in central Illinois. That's actually not the case, according to the American Community Survey, which is run by the, by the Census Bureau every year. Bloomington is actually the wealthiest per capita, if you look at it in terms of the fewest percentile folks who are 300% of the federal poverty line or below. So when we're talking about a climate action plan and the urgency to do so and the ability to do so, this governing body actually is in the best position to do something. Back in Urbana, I have a friend who is in the county jail. He was homeless. For his birthday, he asked me to put him up in a hotel, and I obliged. The next day, over in Champaign, he actually got into an altercation and was arrested by the police. It wouldn't be the first time that someone resorted to incarceration to have a bed to sleep on instead of the cement floor of the Main Street Viaduct in Champaign. We need to think seriously about how to prevent people being in need of the exact services that we are asking you to provide as part of the climate action plan. How do we keep people housed? How are they able to afford heating and cooling? I think it's worthwhile, therefore, to mention that LIHEAT, the Low-Income Heat Electrical Assistance Program, probably bungled the name, only runs nine months out of the year. It actually does not include summer. And when I talked to my state representative, Carol Ammons, about this, she said that they actually supplement LIHEAT as part of the Illinois General Assembly, and it runs out of money in that nine-month span. So we actually have to acknowledge that right now, we have a seasonal influx of people who become housing-insecure when they're at the most risk of overheating. We need cooling centers, we need warming centers, and we need the political will to take this to the state and to the federal levels of government to say, "We need to support our people more." Thank you. Thank you very much.
Scott Steinle.
Yes, I hope the council was listening when the people were saying about cannabis, because I feel that this is a dead, you know, you people are asking for it. To think that this is something that the federal government has said, you know, is illegal, and the city of Bloomington says, "Let's go ahead and do it." And I think that is an absolute disgrace, all of you are, that voted for that. First of all, when the storm drains and the inlets are so bad that there was a street that was flooded in front of my house, I said something to the city, and they said, "Well, if that ever happens again, you call the police department, not an emergency line, have them come out," which I did, because I was done going out at 2:00 in the morning and pouring down rain and cleaning that drive out, those drains out. It's amazing, you've got double drains in front of City Hall, and besides City Hall, they're all AD accessible on the sidewalks, but they are not throughout the city. And I would like to know why. You know, maybe somebody's got an answer why, or is that money, it could be going to some of these programs, but no, the city's got to spend it. The other thing, that the leaves are raked to the parkway, they're to be raked to the parkway, but they insist on putting them in the street. Start issuing ordinance violations. Until it's issued, they're going to continue the practice. And when so high winds come, they redistribute them. Why can't they be put in garbage cans? So if the high winds do come, they don't blow them all over the neighborhood. I would like somebody to actually explain that, because they plug up the drains, they're an absolute nuisance, causes streets to flood, and unless somebody is in an area like that, they're not going to do a cotton-picking thing. So I guess Tim Gleason said that he would return my call today, and he never did. So I guess maybe Tim Gleason needs to get out there and do it himself, and bring Billy Tice with him, Jim Carrey. You know, I guess, you know, to say that I think a lot of the way the city has wasted money, I'd be, you know, they waste it in a manner that you cannot believe. And, but again, going back to the recreational marijuana, I think it is absolutely terrible. You're even conceding it. Maybe it's just another, get another dime. Okay, thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we extend public comment.
There are so many people here from the campaign. Could we just extend comments?
Terribly sorry, but you're out of order. I can't, I can't allow that, but I can't, because it's a business meeting, I apologize. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we extend public comment for 20 more minutes to accommodate the citizens who've come here today to speak to us.
I'll second that.
20 minutes, okay. And we have a second. Motion is second. Madam Clerk, would you call the, excuse me, we need to move forward. Can you call the rule, please?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Malambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ime.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correio.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, we will go, so we have, we will go for till 7:03. Bill Rao, and then Trevor, I believe it is, Rickard, and Wayne Monterey. Bill.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gleason, councilmembers, I would like to make an offer from the Greta Thunberg generation that isn't speaking so eloquently tonight. The Twin Cities are faced with twin problems: bitter cold and homelessness, extreme heat, and the pending appearance of killer heat waves, with 4,000 people who do not have air conditioning. That's a rough guess, it could be higher or lower, we're not sure. We have worked hard, and we have put together a plan to deal with the question of brutal heat. It's an 11-point plan, it's only one page. And it has an addendum, that's another page, that deals with some problems with the heat stroke protocol that our paramedics use. When they're done with their finals and back from vacation, the students would like to meet with each of you to put forward not only a plan for this brutal heat, but a plan that we are now writing down, that we have, we have writing down on bitter heat, bitter cold as well. I would like to say one more thing. I was a nonviolent foot soldier in the Army of the Lord, our affectionate term of endearment for Martin Luther King. And it was our task to storm the ramparts of Jim Crow South. We didn't tear those ramparts down, but we left some gaping holes that unfortunately racists are now filling. But the problem we were dealing with was infinitely simpler and had less urgency than the problem the Greta Thunberg generation is dealing with now. The order of magnitude of urgency is many times greater, and I do hope that you will give them time and listen to them, because we will be passing the torch to them very soon. Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Trevor, Wayne, and Lisa Abbott.
Hello, my name is Trevor Rickard.
Hello, my name is Trevor Rickard. I live in Normal, like, maybe two blocks north of Bloomington, but we're all in this together, so it's the same thing. I came here initially to speak on the issue of climate change, but I feel that there are a number of people who have probably more impactful stories than myself. I'm one of the privileged few that doesn't have housing and security issues, so my house has only been experiencing heating and cooling problems, but not so much that I've been evicted out of my house or anything problem like that by, by the weather. But I also want to speak to the issue of marijuana legalization in our state. The state has already legalized it. The town of Normal, just north of us, has already gone forth, and they've made plans to zone it. So if we were to talk about whether or not Bloomington wants to actually commit to the sale of marijuana, it's going to be here, right? And so the question isn't whether or not we want it in our town, people have it right now, and it's not legal anyways, that's not changing the fact of the matter. Really, what it comes down to is, do we or do we not want that money? Because whatever repercussions are going to happen from it being legal in the state are going to happen regardless. So we have to keep in mind that the way things are, we only have so much control over, and what we need to do is go with the trend of how things are actually going forward. That being said, for us to opt out would be a mistake, it would be a financial, it would create the financial burdens that those of us in the audience think exist are going to happen anyways, and we are otherwise not going to do anything about. We could commit to ourselves as a city to actually gain that revenue, or we could just sit down and say, "You know what, let's let another town next door have it." That's totally fine. In either case, I'll be happy, because the state is going forth, in general, to do the right thing. But I think that we should join in that as well, and allow the city of Bloomington to partake in the manufacturing and the sale of marijuana products. Also, we definitely should take care of, we definitely should take care of the people who are going to be most at the, most vulnerable to the issue of climate change, so I definitely am in support of what the folks are talking about when it comes to making heating and cooling centers, and training paramedics, and the likes of things that they've talked about prior to me being in this stand right now. We can do a lot better. We've got the means to do it, and I definitely think that we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne, Lisa, and Stephanie Smith. Again, if you could be prepared so that as many people can get in as possible. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor. In interest of avoiding duplication, I'll try to keep my remarks brief. I'm here to urge the council to change the direction that it seems to be going on with respect to the sale, manufacture, and distribution of cannabis in Bloomington. I'm a City of Bloomington resident, other than Ward III. I think we've survived without having legal cannabis in this country for a very long time, and there's no compelling reason to make an urgent change right now. I think there's one very strong and compelling reason not to. And that is, that as this council knows, once you do this, once you go down this road, you are not going to be able to change. Now, I read some of the reports, and the best that can be said for the effects of legal cannabis is, the answer's uncertain, at best, is uncertain. And given that fact, maybe we ought to let somebody else experiment, or maybe we ought to learn from the experiences of other states and other cities before we decide to make a commitment that we cannot change. Now, I know there's a strong desire to get the tax revenue, but the reality is, as you undoubtedly know, is that in almost every state, the tax revenue has been dramatically less than was claimed to be in the original forecast, probably because the black market is flourishing, because it's cheaper in the black market after the taxes. And I realize Normal may well legalize the manufacture and distribution of cannabis in this area. So be it. We're not here representing the city of Normal, and you are not the council for Normal. You are the council for the people of Bloomington. It's also been suggested that there would be a benefit to the city from a tourist standpoint. Now, I have my doubts about that. Personally, I don't think that a lot of people are going to flock to Bloomington to buy cannabis. They might flock to Normal, but they're not going to flock to Bloomington. But let's assume that that's true. Do we really want to be known as the capital of Illinois cannabis? I don't think that helps our city one bit. Other people disagree. One little final anecdote, since we're into personal stories. I understand that the manufacture, in particular, of cannabis is an odiferous process. And I grew up in Oregon, where they have pulp mills. If you've ever smelled a pulp mill, you do not want to have it in your town. So with respect to manufacture in particular, I urge you to be very cautious. And finally, one last point. The Planning Commission has spent a great deal of time and effort to try to put together a very quick zoning plan for this committee, for this council. I'm not sure you can adapt the existing zoning structure to this. This council needs to take a second, long look at how the zoning process should work after it hears from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Abbott, Stephanie Smith, and Joel Studabaker.
I'm nervous, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. My name is Lisa Abbott. I'm from Chico, California, which is 15 minutes from Paradise and Megalia, and Paradise and Megalia is the town that the campfire went through last November. It had burned 153,000 acres, which is an area that is larger than Chicago. And the fire got to the outskirts of Chico, and if the wind had shifted, and the firefighters had not been there, it would have gone up too. And even though it didn't burn, my hometown was forever changed that day. And because it was no longer the town I had grown up in, I had become sad and angry after the fire. And one thing I learned from that fire is that life is too short to live it unhappy. So I had to leave not only Chico, but California, because every year it burns, and it was just too sad for me to stay there. I never thought a fire like that would happen in my community, and many of the Paradise and Megalia people felt the same. And they didn't hurry to get out, they didn't hurry to evacuate, and some of them didn't make it out of the fire. Eighty-five people died that day, in that fire, not just that day. Climate change threatens everyone's future. It is not a Democratic issue, and it is not a Republican issue. It is everyone's issue because it is an issue of survival. If you don't want your state to burn like California, then I suggest you start acting to slow it down while you still can. California didn't used to get as hot as it does, and we didn't used to have the wildfires that we do now. Other states will burn too, if they continue to increase in temperatures. So I'm saying, look to other cities and states and see how they are handling the increasing temperatures. In some cities in warmer states, air conditioners are required in rentals, and many cities in those states have cooling centers easily accessible by the people. Please act now, because I don't want to have to run more from more wildfires here in Illinois. Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Stephanie, Joel, and Joe Studabaker, excuse me, Stephanie, Joel Studabaker, and Joe Kennedy. Right, thank you. Sorry, Stephanie.
Hi, my name's Stephanie. I currently live in Urbana, Illinois, but I am co-parent to a BJHS student. I was born in Normal, I grew up in Leroy, and I lived in Bloomington during my teens. The life lessons I learned here haunt me. I know what it means to be a cast-off, to feel immense despair, to be marked for death. I was alone and without much to barter. I was 15. I was homeless. I performed underage survival sex work to get by. I fit the legal definition of a child sex trafficking survivor. Many of the people I met then still live in this community. It feels terrifying to speak aloud about this issue, but you need to know, homelessness for women, teens, and LGBTQ people often looks very different from our cultural imagination of what homelessness looks like. Homelessness for us often means staying in abusive relationships, terrified of losing our children, because there are so few jobs that provide a living wage. Childcare is immensely expensive, affordable housing is difficult to come by. It means bartering sexual services to meet basic needs, putting us at greater risk of assault, trafficking, and abuse by law enforcement. When you do not invest in services, shelters, and affordable housing, your negligence leads to our exploitation. As the climate crisis worsens and more people fall into poverty and housing insecurity, there will be a rise in the sexual exploitation, and we lack the resources to address it. The federal government flashed funds and programs meant to help child sex trafficking survivors expunge their records and access housing. In 2018, the Illinois Trafficking Task Force report, there was no report released in 2019, GCFS said they don't have the resources to take in trafficked children. This means they are predominantly being sent to juvenile detention centers. Involvement with the juvenile justice system and foster care are the biggest risk factors for being trafficked, creating a cycle of abuse, exploitation, and incarceration. Please prioritize the needs of your most vulnerable community members. We need structural and institutional changes with a focus on justice, safety, and security. We need survivor-led, trauma-informed services, specifically for those of us dealing with the sexual violence that frequently accompanies poverty. We need warming centers and shelters with staff who understand our needs and can connect us with the appropriate resources. Housing is one piece, but it is the most important piece. Stability is the foundation of recovery, healing, and building a life that breaks these violent cycles. Shelters and services should not be a Band-Aid, they should be a bridge to the resources necessary for survival. Please take a survivor-centered approach.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Joel Studabaker and Joe Kennedy, and that, I think that's going to be it.
Good afternoon, and thank you, everybody. I live at 707 West Market. I'm very happy to be here, speaking to the Bloomington Council. Just a few months ago, I lived in Normal, where I would not have been allowed to talk about what I'm going to talk about tonight, because it's not on the agenda. The council had not already determined that it was of importance, but as so many people before me have illuminated, this is an urgent, urgent matter, which demands our attention immediately. I'd prepared to talk about my personal story, but I don't know that that's necessary, because so many people before me have shared their own, and I hope that that makes very clear how important this is. And ultimately, my personal story is one of near misses. The time that my landlord, being neglectful, left me for a month in the middle of winter without heat. Thankfully, I had a friend across the street whose couch I could sleep on. The time where, at the beginning of summer, my electricity was turned off because I was broke and had exhausted all of the retirement funds that I could draw out. Thankfully, I had a friend who gave me $500 and helped me to turn my electricity back on. In neither case was my life at immediate threat, but this previous winter people's were. You've heard some of those stories already. At the time, I did have some responsibility. I was serving on the Normal Public Library Board in January, and in fact, we had a board meeting scheduled for January 30th, the night that temperatures ultimately reached what was described as negative 50 wind chills. We canceled our meeting, and leading up to that meeting, we had talked consistently about what would happen in an extreme weather event like this, and we had consistently said, "The library is open. We've done it before. Snow gets bad, cold gets bad, the library stays open." It was on the list that the county provided for emergency warming centers in the case of an event such as the polar vortex. We canceled our board meeting that night, and we closed the library. It was closed the morning of as well. And I spent the morning of January 31st calling, calling the city, calling the county, calling the library board director, trying to understand, where was the list? Where was the list of warming centers? What did we give people who called, asking where they go? And for hours, and this was the morning after we reached the coldest temperatures, so we're already 12, 16, 24 hours into a crisis. Nobody could give me a list. And when somebody finally did, near the top of that list was the Normal Public Library, whose doors were closed. And as I had calls that day, nobody took responsibility. The city said, "Well, the county has a list." And the county said, "Well, the city has a list." I realized immediately that nobody was owning this problem, and so tonight, I'm asking that you own this problem, and make sure that the next time we face a situation like this, which could very realistically be in the next two, three months, that we are prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kennedy, and then our, time has expired. Joe?
Hello, friends. We are students, parents, teachers, grandparents, children. We are experts in our own lives, we all have unique stories and come from different backgrounds. We're CLAC, the Local Climate Action Campaign, unified on this issue of the safety of our community members, and the protection against the inevitable of extreme climate action, or climate, weather-related events. You've heard that there are residents without adequate protection from extreme climate events. We need to be working together to ensure the safety of Bloomington-Normal residents. This is a public issue and requires a collaborative effort, so we can work together on this. And yeah, thanks for your patience, and you're listening through all the stories, and extending the time, so now is the time for action. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, we, given your, that, how efficient, your time was, we have time now for our last person, Serena Fish.
I'm going to be back to my positive self tonight. Sorry. I would like to commend our Fire Department and chief for the unbelievable job that they did fighting the Diesel Dix fire. Unfortunately, we lost the building, but what they did, if you drive by, and protected the buildings and the businesses and the residents right behind them, literally within feet, across the street, a senior building, they are unbelievable what they managed to do to protect these citizens, and they really should get an outstanding ovation. The other thing that I want to say is, whether I agree with them or not, we have an outstanding group of young people in this city who do care, who stood up about climate control, and I hope that we all listen to them in things that we go ahead and decide in the future. I also am very happy to see that we are starting to get some input from other parts of the city on the cannabis situation. I trust most of you on the city council to make an informed decision for the good of the community. Thank you for being there for us. Thank you for realizing it's your decision, not a task force, because the input that we're getting from groups, and I hope you go on and get more, but so far, I just, again, I am so happy to be part of this community, and whether I agree with some of these people or not, I commend them for standing up and being part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have pulled from the consent agenda, number seven? Councilmember Black?
7A.
7A.
7C? Is that C?
7C? Okay.
Bora trustee, I assume.
Got you. Okay. Is, so essentially, is there a motion to approve item 7B as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Malambe. Is there a second? Second. Second by Councilmember Mathie. If anyone wants to go ahead and vote? Oh, I'm sorry. It should be now. There we go. And Councilmember Crable, how do you vote?
Yep.
Okay, the motion carries 9 to 0, there are no needs to announce. Madam Clerk, I go to Councilmember Black first with item 7A.
I just need to recuse myself.
Oh, okay. Bye-bye.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself also.
Oh, okay. We'll let you know in an hour. No kidding. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. We still have a quorum, because we also have Jeff, so. Okay. At this point, is there a motion to approve item 7A as presented?
Submoved.
Moved by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Emig. Any discussion? If anyone wants to go ahead and vote? Councilmember Cravill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries six to zero. There are no needs to announce. Madam Clerk, we move on to item 7C, and that's consideration in action to approve the First Amendment to the current contract with the Border Trustees at Illinois State University, and that's what you recuse yourself on. Okay. I don't think Scott does. He may have. Oh, you're there. Oh, I didn't see you. Excuse me. Okay. Lean back. Is there a motion to approve?
Submoved.
Moved by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Acario. Any discussion? See, none. If anyone wants to go ahead and vote? And Councilmember Cravill, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries eight to zero. There are no needs to announce. Madam Clerk, we move right on to our regular agenda, excuse me, and we have a presentation of the audited fiscal year 2019 comprehensive annual financial report. We have a brief presentation, about 10 minutes, and then a very brief council discussion of budgeted at five minutes. Mr. Gleason, do you have anything, any preparatory comments?
Just a couple of comments before I turn it over to Scott and the reps from Baker Tilly. Again, we, they're outside.
Excuse me, yeah, I wonder if we could just close those doors? Yeah.
But real quick, another good financial auditing year, probably not the most exciting thing that we're going to talk about, but it's critically important, and the relationship that we have with our auditors and the process, you know, nothing was unexpected, and it's another good report for the city of Bloomington. Scott?
Get the words right out of my mouth. Not the most exciting, but the audit is a critical function for the city, very wide-ranging spectrum of review, looking at internal controls, and basically just the material accuracy of the financials. We published on October 14th the audit for the city, the arena, and the public safety pensions can be found on the city's website under the finance page, and the city audits are also, the hard copies of audits are located at the library, oops, the library, my direction's correct here, and the clerk's office. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Jason Coyle. He's a partner with Baker Tilly. I think this is the fourth year we've utilized them, a tremendous relationship with this firm, large international firm, very strong presence in the governmental sector. I have some statistics, but I'm not going to dig for them right now, but very strong reputation, and we're very pleased with the relationship. Jason?
Well, thank you. Good to be with you. I happen to think the audit's fascinatingly exciting. Just kidding. I understand where we're at, but thank you for having me tonight. I'm just going to say a few comments about your audit. First, I want to thank Scott and the Finance Department to help us through the audit. As you can imagine, we spent a couple of weeks here, and we ask a whole lot of questions, and we ask for a lot of information, and we really dig into stuff, and they have their day-to-day job to do on top of that, so we appreciate all the help that they give us. So first and foremost, I'm going to go over this. This is your CAFR, your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So this goes above and beyond the level of reporting you're actually required to do, kind of quote a standard financial statement, so that's great that you do that. There's some extra information in here, the transmittal letter in the front being part of it, and the 10 years' worth of statistical information in the back, and I just always compliment communities who do this because it just provides a higher level of transparency of your finances to yourself, the council, and to community members and bondholders, anybody else who picks up these financial statements. So it is a lengthy document, though. It's 175 pages, so I know not everyone gets elected to the council to read these lengthy financial statements, so I would encourage you to read the section called MDNA, which stands for Management Discussion Analysis. As the term indicates, management helps write that, but it summarizes what went on during the year. There's some charts, some graphs, some comparisons to the prior year, and just highlights some of the bigger events. So I always encourage anybody of a governing body to take the time to at least read through that section. Of this lengthy document, there's only a couple of pages that actually come from my firm, and that's pages one, two, and three, which is our opinion. You know, our opinion is an unmodified or clean opinion, unqualified sometimes you'll hear that said, which is the highest level of assurance we can give over the financial statements. So what that means in layman's terms is that whoever picks up this document, your financial statements can rely on it in all material respects as they evaluate the health and financial activity of the city. So the only change in our opinion from last year is a small paragraph that references the fact that you implemented a new reporting standard this year related to other post-employment benefits, and I'll talk about that briefly in a minute. After the MDNA, we kind of get into the meat of your financial statements, the statement and net position. One of the things I always like to talk about in this statement is something that you don't see on a month-to-month basis, and that relates to your pension liabilities. So always a hot topic in Illinois is the pension liabilities. So you might remember about four or five years ago, for the first time, the net pension liabilities, and you have three pension funds you deal with, IMRF, the police, and the FIRE Pension Fund. Those actually were reported on your financial statements for the first time. So that liability fluctuates year to year largely because of the investments that you hold and depending on how the market does from time to time. So the total of those liabilities as of the end of this year was $154 million. So that's a little bit from the prior year, in large part because of some of the market changes. So, but if you look at the bottom of this statement, you have an unrestricted negative net position of $89.8 million. So if you were to take out those pension liabilities, which you can't obviously because of the reporting standards, but previous to those standards, you would have been in a positive situation, and that would not have been negative, but with those liabilities on there, it comes to the negative amount. Also this year, for the first time, as I referenced a little bit ago, your other post-employment benefit liability, for the first time, was placed on your financial statement. Similar to the pension liability, that liability always has existed, but for the first time, that full amount is being placed on here, and that was, that was, let's see, approximately $16.2 million this year that was placed on here. Other post-employment benefits, just in a nutshell, is other benefits you provide to retirees usually related to health insurance, some sort of subsidized health insurance for retirees for a short period of time. Your main operating fund, a couple pages over, your general fund, I always like to point out, that fund increased fund balance $2.1 million during the year. One of the ratios we always like to look at is your expenditures to your fund balance ratio, and you are at 34.8, excuse me, 34.8%. So you can go about a third of the year without receiving any revenues in that fund and still be able to maintain your operations. And that's similar to percentage, actually a slight increase from where you were this year prior. Overall, your governmental funds increased fund balance by $4.1 million, almost $4.2 million during the year. The other thing I always like to look at and point out in your financial statements are you have some funds that are meant to be primarily self-sustaining through charges for services, your water fund, your sewer fund. You also have the arena, sewer management, and these are what we call business-type or proprietary fund activities. So the only one that's really, has any taxes going to it, is your arena, and that has some home world sales tax that gets placed into there to support some of the operations. Overall, those funds increased fund balance by $3.1 million. So overall, those funds were self-supporting, if you will. The charges for services were meeting your expenses, but not each fund actually met that. Some of them, the sewer fund, for example, had a slight decrease in your net position during the year as did the arena. Other than that, there's a lot of information in your financial statements. There's a lot of budget-to-actual information in here, and as I mentioned in the back of the report, there's a lot of 10-year historical information, which is very useful. One of the other documents that we issue is what formerly is called the communication to those charged with governance and management, sometimes informally referred to as the management letter. In here, we provide a couple of recommendations for some improvements in your internal controls. When we come in to look at the finances and do your audit, we kind of kick the tires on the internal controls or your checks and balances, and sometimes we have some recommendations. So we had a couple of recommendations, actually similar recommendations that we saw in the past, so nothing, nothing that changed, if you will, these kind of carried forward from the previous year. And I should also point out, there's a lot of really great checks and balances that we don't point out in here. We only happen to point out the things that we'd like to see a few tweaks on, and one of them relates to utility billing, and management has included a response in here. You're implementing a new utility billing software that'll hopefully remedy that once that gets fully implemented. And the other recommendation relates to some internal controls we'd like to see improved at the arena. Part of that relates to the relatively small size of the arena, but there's a lot of good compensating controls they have in place as well, but we'd just like to see some additional improvement, and management has, again, included a response to that within the management letter. So I won't go over those in any more detail on that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have either on your financial statements or the management letter.
Questions? Councilmember Bowlin?
I always have money questions.
Money questions, all right.
No, I really appreciate the report because we don't get that information, you know, certainly not as much, and I do read it.
Good, great. Well, we put a lot of hard work into it as a finance firm, so we appreciate you reading it.
I really don't have a lot of questions, and Scott may be able to answer them, and some of them have to do with definitions of the words. I'm not concerned so much about the money because it all looks appropriate to me, and I trust you. Could you define infrastructure, because that was listed in several different columns?
Infrastructure? Infrastructure is an asset of the city that is usually relates to like your roads, bridges, you know, street lighting, things like that, things you can't literally pick up and sell like you could a fire truck or a police car or something like that.
Okay. And then construction in progress asset?
What is that?
Yeah.
Basically, you, when you're working on something, some sort of project, some sort of capital-related project that hasn't been concluded as of the end of the fiscal year, which what we call construction in progress. So it could be anything, you could be doing some improvements of your street that were in process during the fiscal year end but hadn't fully concluded, and so they don't get recorded as a capital asset and then get depreciated until they're fully, the project is fully concluded. So it's usually related to something along those lines.
So it's just part of the accounting?
Yeah, yeah. So we want to make sure we capitalize it, it just doesn't trigger the event of starting to be depreciated until it's finalized, and then it'll be re-categorized back to, you know, whatever it might be, you know, building, infrastructure, things like that.
Current versus non-current liability?
Mm-hmm.
Explain.
Generally speaking, your current liability is going to be paid a lot sooner than a long-term liability. So they're all liabilities of the city. You owe money, or to say plainly, you owe money to somebody, it's just when are you going to pay it? Current liabilities tend to be repaid in approximately a year or less. Long-term liabilities, which is, you know, likely long-term debt, bonds, and things like that, they're going to be paid over multiple years.
Okay. So then current liability, would that be like pension or?
No, pensions are long-term liabilities. Yeah, because you're paying those over, you know.
Capital lease, is that?
Yeah, well, the capital lease could be in both, you know, the part that you're going to pay in one year is a current liability, the part that you're going to pay after one year would be a long-term liability.
Let's see what else. I think that's it.
Okay. Good questions, yeah.
Good questions. Councilmember Black?
Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate you highlighting the section that's the most important, or the MAA?
MVNA, yes.
Yes, the management portion, four to 14. So, you know, I guess this is more of a question for Tim or maybe Scott. How does this report fit into our larger conversation around how we want to think about our bond rating moving forward? There's a lot of discussion about that in the report, and I know that in the past, we've had some conversations about, do we want to see what it would take to get to a AAA? Do we want to maybe scale back some of our reserves to fund a couple of the capital projects? How will this report fit into that process?
I think it's one that does fit into the process. It's a question that's going to come before council as we're ramping up and start having very public discussions about the FY21 budget. So it does fit appropriately. If, you know, the two things that were described, I call it, you know, findings with remedy, you know, where we have the management portion, where we have identified areas, and we know that we're working towards a solution. If this was an audit that showed a different outcome, it would be impactful to the bond rating discussion. So this fits very well, and we have opportunities, I think, as a community. Scott, do you have anything additionally to say?
Well, you mentioned reserves, and I don't want to get into a big reserve, but the $30 million, 30-plus million dollar general fund reserve, the unassigned portion of that is more at 22.1, which is what we were discussing during the summer. So there's a lot of restricted and reserved, you know, part of it is the utility tax, $5 million, so it's not quite as high as what was commented right there. So, you know, the GFOA recommendation of two months' worth of balances, you know, that's roughly 18%, so out of $100 million balance or budget, we'd be at $18 to $19 million. So we're at 22, so we're slightly over, but not extraordinarily so.
Right.
And that could come into the ratings. When I did the research a few months ago, some of the municipalities that had AAA ratings and stuff like that had higher percentage fund balances, so.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just show my hand here, is that I would rather us use that money than have it sit somewhere and keep that to where we're at, but I don't know enough about what the positive impact of a AAA bond rating would be long-term, so I'd be curious to know more about that, but right now, that's kind of how I feel, whether it be, you know, 18 million or 20 million, and we got, you know, three or four million to play with, that can make a huge impact on some big projects that we want to have done.
Isn't kind of the, now I'll ask Scott, isn't kind of the answer to that question, there's not that much to be gained by going to, from where we, going to the second highest to the highest bond rating? I mean, slightly.
I mean, rates are so low right now, I don't know if I can quantify that. He's fine as well, but, you know, we're below 2% I think on municipal bonds.
Yeah, rates are so low right now.
You know, that the difference might not be dramatic at this point. In the future, when they're going back up, it could be only.
When we're done winning, I understand that.
And wouldn't one of the variables be, as I understand it, and I've been asking Mr. Gleason at least, but from my understanding of, at least of the psychology of bond ratings, that it also includes when our backs to the wall, how have we behaved as a council and mayor?
There's a lot of, I'm sorry, Tim, you jumped in on that one.
I see a head nodding, but.
There are kinds of issues like that, just the capacity for economic growth within your community, I mean, how you measure that, you know, there's ISU as in Normal, I mean, there's things like that, too, where the capacity to raise revenues, the attractiveness of the community, there's a lot of components, when I was asking about this, that go into it, and it's a little, I'm sure there's a lot of more science behind it than what I see, but to me, it's a lot of art, you know, from the rating agencies.
I think what I would share additionally, in my experience, when we've had a bond issuance, it's more about the story of the community, which is what Scott was just talking about, the health and vibrance of the community in the city of Bloomington. We have a good story to tell.
Right. Well, we all know that, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move on, next to an action item, actually, it would be number 8B, consideration in action to approve the 2019 property tax levy estimate for the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Library as requested by the Finance Department. And once again, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, and then, I guess, Scott Rathman. Tim?
You care if I interject a quick? Chief Donut just shared this. I think there's a gold vehicle in the parking lot. The alarm's going off, and it's not loud, but just want to make sure that somebody's battery doesn't go out with the thing going. So a gold vehicle, what is this, a Prius, chief? Yep, got it. Gold Prius.
Some alderman's car is illegally parked.
I have a gold Prius.
Oh, you may want to go take a look at it.
I'm going to go take a look.
Okay. At that point, turn it back over to you to talk about the.
And then what I was going to share, mayor and council, you know, got marching orders from you guys to hold property tax, and that's exactly the position that we're in. We see the proposed property tax rate that comes for council tonight is similar, almost identical to that of last year. Actually, if you go out, I think, three, you know, three numbers beyond the decimal point, I think it actually goes down a touch. But what we've seen is slight growth in the EAV, and their property tax rate, you know, the same as last year, we'll see about $200, $225,000 increase. And again, tonight, this sets in motion a schedule of events that has to be done by the mayor and the council before it comes before the council to approve in December at a council meeting. Scott Rathman has, I think, two or three slides. Is that right?
At 500 feet, would it be fair to say then that there's, once again, since 2008, our property taxes that are paid in the city of Bloomington are flat?
That's true.
And there are some, to the extent that there's more money paid in it, because we've got new development or new residences.
There is growth, and again, strength. There is growth and again, strength in property values in the City of Bloomington. Also, just to share more so for the community, because I know the council gets this, but including the library, the City of Bloomington's portion of the entire property tax bill is only fifteen percent. But, you know, we understand that that's a very important fifteen percent potentially for the residents of Bloomington.
Thank you. Scott?
Scott. Once again, that was a pretty good summary right there. The goal, obviously, was to leave the tax rate the same. The EAV came out September, one-point-six percent increase. We basically just layered in the rate on top of that to see what additional property tax levy revenues were available. That coincides, you know, revenue increase related to value increase kind of coincides with cost increases. So, when that value goes up, the revenue goes up slightly, you know, to help offset those costs. So, we'll start with the EAV. You can see, oh, I said one-point-six, one-point-three, one percent. That will be adjusted slightly by the end of the year. Exemptions will come in, disabled veterans, tax challenges. But on one-point-nine billion dollars, last year, I think the adjustment was ten to twelve million. It really is an immaterial effect on the overall tax rate. This is just a function of the EAV. This is total assessed value, so this is basically a three-X of the EAV, so five-point-seven billion dollars in values citywide. We just have five years of history on here, but I'm just going to jump down to the tax rates. And you can see that across the bottom, we have really hovered right around the one-point-oh-eight percent. I mean, we popped up a little bit here in 2018, but really, I mean, we're talking about a hundreds of percent changes. And so, the last two years in a row, the EAV increases have allowed us to receive an additional two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in the tax levy. For the library, same situation, two-point-six percent has really been, other than 2015, you know, two-point-five to two-point-six across the last five years, sixty-four thousand dollars in available increases in the tax levy due to the EAV increases. The combined total, obviously, just a mathematical summation of the above of the library and the city. Last year, we ended up at one-point-three-four-six-eight percent. As we're standing right now with the estimate, we're at one-point-three-four-five percent. That gives us, you know, a little bit of room for some adjustment on the EAV towards the end of the year to be almost identical with last year's tax rate. This is just kind of a visual distribution. I'm going to go back up for a moment. These categories that you see, I mean, these have been set over time related to certain decisions the council has made. Other than the general corporate and the library, this is the total combined. All other ones have been static basically since 2015. So, you know, we obviously pay more in bonds than bonds in interest in the two-point-two million, but we make that up with other general fund revenues. So, I'm just highlighting that these categories don't exactly match our expenses. These have just been set and we're really dealing off, working off the budget of twenty-point-five million for the general fund and four-point-nine for the library. This is a visual of those same categories. So, you can see forty-six percent of that is related to police and fire, public safety pensions. And then, this is a little dated right here, but this is our last number. So, right now, we're actually showing thirteen cents or thirteen percent for the city versus, you know, the other, the highest six is the school district at sixty-one percent of the total. You know, this is just a different visuals, percent or pieces of dollars. It's the same number. And that really concludes the presentation. Any questions at this point?
Questions? Councilmember Bowlin?
This is just a rumor, but, well, no, actually, I read it, but I'm not sure it's accurate. There's going to be a new formula for IMRF funding, is that true?
A new form, well, they have lowered their return assumption by a quarter point. And so, that, I mean, that's what, it's driving up the IMRF cost for the coming year. We're going to be going up substantially. I think you probably saw that normals went up substantially. I think they went from seven-point-five percent, which is a pretty high return assumption. We use seven percent for the public safety pensions and they took it down to seven and a quarter. So, that portion has changed for sure and that's what's driving up everyone's rate.
Thanks.
Not a rumor.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Scott. Is there a motion to accept the property tax levy estimate as presented for 2019?
So, both.
Moved by, holy cow, okay. Moved by Councilmember Milowamway, second by Councilmember Bowlin, who, just for the record, fist bumped each other. And at this point, we can go ahead and vote on this. Councilmember Crabbill, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. And at this point, we then move to city manager's discussion, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Scott's going to put a schedule of events up on the board. And as we're waiting for that, I guess the one thing that I wanted to share, mayor and council, you guys are aware already, but more so for the community, I wanted to share that we had a staff retreat for directors last week. And it wasn't just the directors, but it was the second tier in each department. And there's three or four direct reports typically to each director. So, a total of about forty city staff. And the title or the subject matter was servant leadership and trying to improve the culture of the organization. Words that we throw out there quite a bit is ambassadors of the city. And it's something that we believe in. And I just wanted to take the opportunity under my portion to share that, you know, one of the very clear directives of council has been set in motion. So, just want to share that with you. And then, we have the events that are up on the board. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Just in terms of a couple of items, first of all, I want to thank Alderman Milowamway for coming out in the beautiful weather yesterday to represent me during one of my classes for the Veterans Day celebration. I appreciate that very much as Mayor Pro Tem. And I do want to, once again, note the unfortunate passing of a really long-term icon of our community who's contributed a lot in civil rights and that's Merlin Kennedy. And it's very moving to be at his funeral last week, but very unfortunate, but someone who certainly would be missed. That's all that I have. Councilmember Bray?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Tim, for setting the tone for city staff and for all of us in talking about servant leadership. And I appreciate your leadership in that regard because I certainly do observe that you are a servant leader and I do appreciate you. Tonight, we heard from many people in regards to public comment. And I'd like for us to get some more information about the idea of cooling centers and heating centers and see what that might look like in our community. So, I was very glad that those folks came out and spoke to us. And I look forward to those meetings that they've proposed. And then, secondly, we had people who spoke perspectives about cannabis in our city. And I'd like to hear more about that as well. I'd like to have some more conversation and maybe in our committee of the whole next time. I'd like to have our chief and the police officer speak to us directly about cannabis and what kinds of equipment is available to test and what it means manpower-wise to try to police for it. I'd like to hear more about the drug court. We have one of the speakers come, Todd Miller. He's on the board of the drug court as well as he is the director of the Recovery Today. And I think that we would benefit from hearing more of that perspective as we try to get all the information that we need in order to make this decision that's coming up. We've also, we've heard from District Eighty-seven Superintendent and Unit Five Superintendent and they've told us that they don't favor moving into being a cannabis community. I'd like to see if those folks would like to come and speak to us so that we can understand their concerns. And finally, we've got two hospitals in our town. And I think it's important for us to reach out to the board of these hospitals and see if they won't come and speak to us about what this looks like if we go to a recreational model in our city allowing the proliferation of cannabis for this full list of businesses. So, I think the time for us to do our homework is here and we need to have these discussions as a council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
Thank you. And I would like to echo Kim on the comments around the warming and cooling centers. I'm unfortunately quite ignorant on the issue. I don't know what we offer at this time, but definitely something that I care about and would like to see us figure out some solution. But to that point, I mean, I don't even know how much it would even cost to run one of these centers, what that would even look like. I mean, I don't know where they would go. And I'm interested in having those discussions. And as a couple of the speakers were up here tonight, I thought to myself, you know, we had a really great meeting with the county and the town a couple of weeks ago. And I can't think of a more regional issue than this one because having something here versus not normal or vice versa, it doesn't make any sense to me. So, this is definitely a regional issue that I would love to see taken up at a future joint session. I know that we've talked about having more of those because it's not going to be a one-and-done type thing. This would require some funding and some infrastructure. But I think everybody has to have some skin in the game. And as I was listening, I kept thinking about how these concerns really echo the thoughts and sentiments when we came back and helped fund mental health services at the county. So, there is a model already in place for us in this intergovernmental cooperation to get some bigger, larger challenges completed. But, you know, the piece about the cannabis is that I know that we had talked about at several points having some written responses and I think some of those might be coming in and I hope that they still do. Perhaps as part of that discussion, if we have that on the agenda, include kind of a timeline on when some of these votes might be coming down the pipe. I got some folks asking me, when are we going to have the final decision made on this and when's the vote going to be? And I don't have a full, I'm guessing it's December ninth, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I want to make sure that we, we're all on the same page about how that process gets played out. So, thank you.
Yeah, just want to-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just want to echo Scott's comments about getting a clear timeline in place because I too am getting those questions about when the final vote will be. And also, kind of really like the idea of people submitting testimony, written testimony because I do think that that can, you know, save us a little bit of time and allow us to all, you know, be looking at the same set of documents. I am not interested in kicking the can down the road. I really think this is something that we should wrap the year with. And I just want to take a moment to recognize the leadership of the young people that came out today. Really excited to have met with them and to have heard their plan. And truly, a lot of the ideas that they're presenting are low-hanging fruit, for lack of a better word. There is maybe one or two things that would require a more significant investment on our end, but really what it takes is, you know, the will and the organizing to make it happen. And so, I certainly am supportive of it and want to see us move on it. Also, want to shout out Merlin Kennedy, who was featured in the exhibit that opened this past weekend at the McLean County Museum of History. It's a permanent exhibit, so you can check it out anytime. And it was called "A Community in Conflict", which I think is, it's really awesome to see that lifted up and for us to continuously ask the question of who has had power in our community and how that power has shifted. So, really encourage folks to check it out. And then, again, want to commend the response of the fire department to the fire at Diesel Dix. I heard that it was handled really well. And I think that is all I have. Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Milowamway?
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I, you know, I very much would appreciate the opportunity to have a committee of the whole meeting and have a discussion about cannabis. And my particular interest, as I've stated before, I really want to understand the financial impact for the city. So, when it comes to revenue that we might realize or not. And again, it's not taking one position one way or another, but it's just really trying to, you know, to unpack all of that and understand it as best as we can before we can make a decision. The other things I wanted to mention, yes, I did step in for Mayor Renner for Veterans Day ceremony at McLean County Museum of History. As always, it's always a moving time, very humbling to be in the presence of many veterans. One of them was our esteemed city manager who was there. And we also had Alderman Painter who was there and Alderman J.B. Mathi who was there. So, it was a great ceremony. I also was, last week, I think on November sixth, asked to present a proclamation to the Stanford Labor School on behalf of the mayor as well. And that was also a very good ceremony, especially at a time when construction season is over. So, it just kind of brought to mind the great work that some of those folks do out there on the roads, you know. And I don't know if citizens have noticed that we, there's been quite a bit of work on the road being done. And I think we are all better for it. So, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Donna?
The VA Center opened up last week and it was very impressive. I was very happy to go. Both Normal and Bloomington had a very good representation. There were four council members from each city and Billy Tyus was there too. I'm very happy, it was a six-million-dollar investment in the community. They have thirty employees at this time. There were hundreds of veterans signing up and they really believe it's going to expand. So, this is a very big thing for this community and I'm happy to have it in my ward.
Councilmember Mathi?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I was honored to be at the Veterans Day ceremony. I try to go to every year. And I was, you know, it was gratifying to see how many people still came out in the middle of the sideways blowing snow that didn't stop people. I was not ready for the rifle that went off right behind my head though. You know, ducking, little duck-and-cover action on that one. I also wanted to give props to Chief Donut, who came out this morning and talked to the Sunrise Rotary Club. He answered a lot of questions from the community there, did a great job there. You know, also, shout out to Public Works. I saw many videos of what is becoming officially known as snuffleupagus moving throughout the community and sucking up the leaves. So, they were working through Demet's Grove on Saturday, knocking some stuff out there, which was just in time for me to have to re-rake my entire yard as the maple leaves finally came down. And then, with the warming cooling center, I'm very interested in being part of that too. I just had the, you know, and maybe as an interim short-term plan, that the arena could be a really good place because it's already got a lot of bathrooms built into it. It's got individual rooms in the suite. So, just if all else hit the fan and we needed someplace, that's a pretty easy place, I think, to go. We could figure out some sort of beds or something, but we have spaces and we have everything else I think we need there, including a kitchen if we needed. So, I'm really interested to see how that conversation plays out because those students did an amazing job and that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Amy.
Yeah, I'll just say a few things. Most everyone has covered everything I want to say. The shout-out for the "Community in Conflict" exhibition. I was picking up my dry cleaning right next to the fire at Diesel Dix and commented again, like this was amazing that they were able to prevent that from spreading. And the cleaners were very thankful as well. The other thing about the fire department is they do an amazing children's program. So, at my daughter's preschool, she learned all about fire safety and got to climb up on the fire trucks and came home and taught me all about fire safety all night. So, that was really commendable. I also want to commend the youth who spoke today. They led with story and grace and I thought I was really impressed with their poise as well as their passion and content. I think Bill Rouse's proposal may be a good place to start. And I don't know if there's a way to dovetail some of the considerations going forward with the plan for the city's emergency operations center, but it occurred to me that that might be a potential marriage.
emergency operations center, but it occurred to me that that might be a potential marriage. And I just want to urge everybody in the community, organizations, citizens, all, to please let us know what you're thinking about cannabis, because we really want to hear from all of you. Thank you.
Alderman Crable, do you have anything to add?
Nothing here, thank you.
Okay. And then, as we're, once again, continuing the, everybody's favorite discussion of cannabis, we can make it clear, in a few weeks, regardless of what other issues are, it will be legal January one, everywhere in Illinois. It's a quest, our charge is a very narrow one, so let's all just keep that in mind. Anyway, do you want to-
Last quick thing is just to remind people that the planning commission is meeting tomorrow at four PM to talk about cannabis-
Thank you very much.
...which everybody loves.
Favorite topic.
Not cannabis, but just talking about it.
Yeah, I know. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we actually, on the agenda, have an executive session, but Happy Thanksgiving has been delayed until December ninth.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay. Okay.
Thanksgiving miracle.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Move by, with enthusiasm by Councilmember Painter, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cario. All in favor, say the word by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.